All right, welcome to the Eastern School Committee meeting of Thursday, September 24th, 2020. This meeting is held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor Massachusetts March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of open meeting law. This meeting is on, ECAT is filming it, it's also on Facebook Live, and it will be broadcast on ECAT at some time this week. If you have a question for the Q and A, please type it in, but remember to put your name and address first, and then you can ask your question. At this time, I'm going to make a motion to enter into executive session, and we will return to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the Eastern Educators Association and the Secretarial Unit, is that right? Or not? Yes, and the Secretarial Unit. And in my opinion, having this discussion in open meeting would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And all those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Jeremance, yes.
DeLuca, yes?
Starr, yes.
Okay, we'll try to make it quick. Everyone will be back. Thank you. Lynn, are you here? Do I, if I end, am I going to end the meeting?
...
Jen's in the waiting room.
Who is?
Nancy and Jen.
Thanks, Michelle.
I'm kind of mystified that sometimes we're in a waiting room and sometimes we just go right in. It's confusing.
It might be how you're signed into Zoom because I've signed in under a work email. It might not.
Also, if you use the link from the town, it takes you right in. If you use the link from our packet, you end up in the waiting room.
Well, I can't, I can't use the link directly at all because for some reason my iPad won't, won't, it, it says that the device is not sufficiently updated to, but I can go into Zoom and just put in the numbers and it's fine and it takes me right in. So it's, it's just kind of, so I don't even know, you know, what happens with the waiting room situation. It's kind of a strange, strange.
Yeah, we're here. Welcome back to the school committee meeting of Thursday, September 24th, 2020. So we're going to go down to item number four and I am going to make a motion to move this item, possible vote to accept secretarial MOA and unit A MOA to our next school committee meeting.
Table until the next.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
O'Neill, yes.
Grant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay. Next up, minutes from July 9th, 2020. Are there any comments, questions, or corrections?
I didn't have any.
Any other questions? Okay. Do I have a motion for the minutes of July 9th to accept them?
So moved.
Second, Nancy. Okay. All those in favor?
O'Neill, yes.
Grant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, great, thank you. And then the other, the minutes from August 13th, 2020. Are there any comments, corrections, any questions? Caroline?
I can't tell if, no, I'm not muted. Okay. On page six, there was a question.
won't, it, it says that the device is not sufficiently updated to, but I can go into Zoom and just put in the numbers and it's fine and it takes me right in. So it's, it's just kind of, so I don't even know, you know, what happens with the waiting room situation. It's kind of a strange. Yeah, we're here.
Welcome back to the school committee meeting of Thursday, September 24th, 2020. So we're going to go down to item number four and I am going to make a motion to move this item, possible vote to accept secretarial MOA and unit A MOA to our next school committee meeting.
Table until the next.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Grant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay. Next up, minutes from July 9th, 2020. Are there any comments, questions, or corrections?
I didn't have any.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion for the minutes of July 9th to accept them?
So moved.
Second, Nancy. Okay, all those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Grant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, great, thank you. And then the other, the minutes from August 13th, 2020. Are there any comments, corrections, any questions? Caroline?
Um, I can't tell if, no, I'm not muted. Okay, um, on page six, there was a question from a parent about what was considered high needs. And I just found that the definition needed a few changes and I actually don't be, because it normally would be on this device, but under, instead of an example, I would change that to just students who are, I just, I, I find, I have to find the other, on the other, unfortunately, I can barely read it on.
Caroline, Caroline, I can read it for you. This was from, from Kelly Jackson, what is considered high needs, what if you don't want your child? So an example would be a student who is part of one of the special education programs, such as the foundations program.
Right, right. Okay, so the changes that I had written down, but I should have written the whole thing down is, students, I would say students who are in one of the special education programs and then take out students in, but just said English language learners. In other words, students aren't in English language learners. They are, so it's students, just English language learners next, just admit students in. And then change students in achievement gaps to students with achievement gaps.
It's, can I just make one clarification?
Yeah.
It actually is students who receive English language support.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, it just, you, you wouldn't say a student was in English learner, I, language, English learning learners. So that's why I wanted to change. No, that's, that's better. I'm, I just, I just wanted to change the, you know, you can't really be in a learner. And then students with achievement gaps. Does that make sense, Chrissy? Instead of in achievement graph gaps. And then finally, I'm not sure how to word the lower economic status. I think that, did, did we even have that as a category? I, I don't think that's by itself a category that requires high needs, is it? I mean, that may be a factor, but it's not really a category, is it?
It's like, it's, it's one of those things that's under the MCAS definition of high needs. Yes, but I don't think in terms of students who are coming five days a week.
Right, right. That's kind of what I, that's what I had in mind. I wasn't very clear. Exactly.
Yeah, at least Chrissy is that, is that accurate?
Take that out.
Right, just being economically disadvantaged does not qualify you for receiving special education services and coming to school five days.
Correct, so I would just.
Well, not even everybody, everybody, people who come for five days are not all special education students.
Right.
Either.
Okay.
So I think you just said it doesn't qualify you for special education services, so you can go all five days, but not all, like, for example, a student who receives E L services is not necessarily, yeah.
Yep.
Um, but socioeconomic status could certainly have an impact.
Okay.
So you could say then economically disadvantaged, or I just think lower economic status is a, I, I just don't like that term.
Change it to socio.
Pardon me?
Change instead of.
Well, I think the term is economic disadvantage.
Right, I would, I would go with Jen's.
Okay.
Also, for the high needs preschool should be included in that as well.
Right, right. And that was the last and, and as well as preschool. So I, I just thought that it wasn't, you know, we needed to just clarify that definition of high needs a little bit more.
So Caroline, will you give Lynn a call tomorrow and just go through that paragraph like you just said it? And get her to tomorrow? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or corrections? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to accept these minutes, the August 13th, 2020 minutes with corrections.
Okay.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Grant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right, next up, vote to approve the physical education, health, and wellness guideline plans. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. So Corinne McCarthy, who just appeared, she's the department head of our phys ed, health, and wellness department, and she is going to present to you the physical education, health, and wellness guidelines that she is proposing for your approval. You would need to vote for it, very similarly to our adjusted music guidelines and our athletic guidelines, which are going to have, Mr. Matthews is also going to be here to talk about that shortly. So this is specifically for modifying, as you know, physical education along with some of the music offerings has been deemed as a higher risk. And so Ms. McCarthy has utilized many resources and, and expert sources to come up with what we would like to use as our guidelines for these offerings in the district. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McCarthy and she can discuss any of the salient points with you and answer any questions that you might have.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My first day of school, so I'm a little tired, but it was amazing. So, um, do I, do you want me to read the whole guidelines? Because they receive the guidelines, right, correct?
The guidelines. If you maybe want to talk about some of the sources that you used in your research and then if they have any questions, you could, you could answer those, please.
Excellent. So as far as my research, I, obviously, I've been researching what is going on now. I've looked at the MIAA guidelines. I've looked at all of the, the summer camp guidelines, the fitness guidance, the D E S E is obviously as well, as well as youth sports that are going on now. I'm actually coaching Little League softball. So I'm definitely involved in that. I understand the considerations that, and the precautions that we have to take. But I also feel strongly that we can do this safely. So I put together these guidelines as far as, for evidence. If the CDC doesn't actually support evidence of transmission through the services per CDC, also the fifteen, over fifteen minutes for the interaction with close contact for students. So those would obviously be considered as well as far as making sure kids were a part. I have also worked with the C tape, which is a Massachusetts P E Health Director's Department Head, Health and Wellness Coordinators. They are doing it in other districts. And this is kind of what I came up with. And this is how I feel strongly that we can do this safely, so with protocols in place. So if you have any questions, I'd answer.
Corinne, I think you did an excellent, or your group did an excellent job putting this together. I know you've been on, I think, every single meeting this summer for eight different groups. So thank you very much for that. I don't have any questions. Go ahead, Caroline.
Well, you had to know I'd have questions. Corinne, I'm just wondering, first of all, I had a question about the six feet with masks indoors. I think that there's quite a bit of discussion among, in the scientific community now about six feet being not a long enough, you know, a sufficient space even with masks indoors for strenuous activity. And also they include in that singing, things like that, that that's just, you know, that the, the chances, unless people have really excellent tight-fitting masks, there will almost certainly be aerosol that escapes and that can travel as far as sixteen feet. So I, I am wondering if that really, if it is really going to be possible to have any strenuous activities take place inside with masks with only six feet of distance.
And so if I over refer to the D E S E guidelines and the D E S E guidelines, I said, obviously, we want to be outside whenever possible. And that is our number one concern, but we live in Massachusetts. So as the, the weather starts to turn, I'm trying to think of alternative activities that we can do where we have small cohorts of, of students. So with the distance and being able to, I think, six feet with masks on, I mean, that what we're doing in school is strenuous wise, our students are not changing the locker rooms of clothes. So strenuous wise, it's not going to be what it has been in the past either. So that's the other thing, like, I'm, I'm also considering. So if we were to play pickleball, say, in, in gym, in gym with, like, singles, then you wouldn't be near anyone and you have your other space. So things that we could be creative with, I sure can take your recommendations. It's more than when appropriate and when we can, more than six feet. But again, I'm trying, we're trying to stay outside as long as we can. And, and, and trying to keep the kids active and, and moving because they need it. Like, they were so, I was so happy to see them, but they were so happy to, to go out and, and have their masks break. And it was, it was just, it was very dedicated. I, I really, so I'm, I'm just trying to think and I'm fighting for our kids because I, I just know they love what we do, so.
I, I love your enthusiasm and I feel that just from a, a sort of different perspective, I'm also fighting for our kids. I mean, I, I feel like, you know, I want them most of all to be safe. Of course, I want them to be happy and participating in things that they love, of course. I think if you just, you know, kind of cautiously approach each activity and sort of make a judgment about how strenuous the activity is. And I mean, as you said, if, if the kids can stay outside all year, even in the snow, that would be great. But I do have a question then, that my second question was about this small cohort situation. Now, my understanding of cohorts, as we have sort of created them, they can be any size, of course. But they're usually quasi-permanent, the way that we've set up, you know, the teaching and learning cohorts. Even at the high school and middle school, it's very large groups because it's the Monday, Tuesday group and then the Thursday, Friday group. But when you say you would set up cohorts for the class, I mean, for the, for the class period, that sounds like a temporary cohort. To me, that's not a necessarily, I mean, you would always do small groups, right? So I'm not sure how you're using cohort in that context. Because if it's just for the class, for that class, I, I'm not sure that it actually, you know, creates a safer environment. I, I'm not saying you can't, I mean, you may have to do that anyway, but I'm just wondering how you're using in that context.
Okay, sorry. We were kind of coming in and out with the Wi-Fi, so.
Yeah, I am. You are too, yeah.
Okay, just for clarification, you're talking about the, where does it say? So in grouping, I mean, right now, I, we're putting, I, I put kids into different, like seating charts, almost the same thing outside, so that would be similar. So if we were to do something together, that would be for us in extent, our unit area. So if we were to work on a unit, say, we were doing, that would be that person's partner through all the whole unit. So we would keep the consistency there. The other thing of consideration we could talk about, which this has been thrown around is, is to have P E teachers submit safety protocol plan, like what they feel is going to be appropriate for each unit. And then they can submit it to me and I can review it and go over it before they're allowed. Like, this isn't something I want to do tomorrow. This is something I want to do down the line. And I, I want to phase it in. I don't want to say no commitment forever, but if we phase it in, in, in big steps, just like we're doing school, I feel like it will be successful. So the consideration of, of definitely having teachers submit a safety protocol point for each unit, I, I definitely feel like that might be, then the teachers are thinking about it a little bit more, like exactly plans. So I'm going to work with that as well.
No, I'd love that. Just remember Caroline, is that the, the students don't have P E every day like, like English class. There's large gaps in between when they meet.
High schoolers do.
Well, high schools are going to do it on cohorts, but the elementary is going to be even further apart because we've actually spaced them more than they have been before.
And, and K through eight, the classes are, are staying together. They are not intermingling. So technically, those are in a cohort, which is, which is good. It's already set up for the P E teachers.
That, that makes sense. And actually, Corinne, you helped my, me understand that the cohort would be for the whole unit. So that actually does add an additional layer of safety. I thought it was just for that day's class and that kind of didn't make sense to me, to have like a new cohort every day, every time you met, you know. But if it's this, if it's for the whole unit, that helps. And maybe it could be for multiple units to have those same groups together, you know. I mean, it helps a little bit. These are all just incremental measures. They're not by themselves terribly effective, but when you add them all together, they do make everyone safer, teachers and students. So thank you for explaining that so well.
Are there any other questions for Corinne? All right, do I have a motion to accept the physical education, health, and wellness department guidelines during COVID-19 reopening?
O'Neil, so moved.
And do I have a second?
Star, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Grant's yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you, Corinne. Good job. Okay. Next up, vote to approve the EMS and O A athletic plans. What?
Nice job, Corinne.
Okay, thank you. All right. EMS and O A athletic plans. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. As you can see, Bill, Matthews has magically appeared. He is our athletic director and he has been reviewing the athletics. As you know, it is extremely complex. And he, excuse me, he brought some preliminary information before you. Now he has fine tuned that. He is here to answer any questions that you might have before he finalizes the EMS and O A athletic plans.
Good evening, everyone. I do understand that everyone had received this document. So I won't read through that and bore you with all the details. Just in terms of the guidance for the document, it is a little bit complex in the sense that there are different agencies, and I think Dr. Cabral dealt with this as well, that you're dealing with multiple agencies that are providing guidance. So the, the guidance initially came from the E E A, the Environmental and Energy Agency, and then it went through D E S E, then the M I A A, and of course, any direction from the local Board of Health. So taking all those pieces and putting it together, I crafted this plan and certainly want to address any questions that you have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Matthews? Go ahead, Caroline.
Unmute. Okay. I had a question about, what is the normal bus capacity? I, I see that you said that there would be twenty-seven students on a bus. What is the, how different is that from normal athletic busing?
Eighty-three is the, is the stated bus capacity that Lucy.
Okay, I couldn't remember. I was just curious. So that's great. So that sounds like a very good distancing on the buses. That's, that's terrific. And my only other question is, I think on page six, there were two sentences that were almost exact duplicates of each other. There was just one minor difference between them. So I didn't know if that was unintended or, you know, it was just two different. I mean, I don't have the document in front of me now, but I did write that down, that on page six, there's a sentence about self-screening. And it seems like the two, there's two essentially duplicate sentences there. So you might want to take a look at that.
I will. Thanks, Caroline.
Yeah, I just had a question about, so I know for the EMS one, it, it talks about the tryouts being on the 21st, which was earlier this week. So I was curious to know if that had, had happened or, or things next week, really.
No, it started, the tryouts for field hockey started on Monday.
Okay. Thank you.
How did that go?
So far, so good. Very pleased to have the coaches that we have. It's a new endeavor, obviously, dealing with these three new teams for us. So there are some, some things that we're learning, but I think that we're really committed to doing a good job with this program. And we're just doing everything that we can to communicate with the parents, the students, the coaches, and the administration to make sure that, you know, everybody has the information that they need, you know, for the tryouts, et cetera. So everything has gone, has gone smoothly so far. I know that as time goes along, we're, we're always prepared for a road bump, but we're doing the best that we can to, to make it smooth for everyone.
Any other questions for Mr. Matthews? Either on the O A Athletic Department policy or, not policy, but protocols or the Eastern Middle School field hockey. All right, I'm going to make a, I'll move that we accept the athletics plan and COVID-19 safety protocols for fall 2020, Allgryms High School Athletic Department. for fall 2020 Oliver Ames High School Athletic Department.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
O'Neal, yes.
Durant, yes.
The Luca, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay, and now let me make a motion to accept the athletics plan and COVID-19 safety protocols for fall 2020 for the Eastern Middle School Field Hockey Team.
O'Neal, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neal, yes.
Durant, yes.
The Luca, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Thanks to all of you. Thank you.
Next, uh, retirement OA physics teacher, Dr. Cabral.
Thanks. So again, another bittersweet moment here. Um, happy for the staff member, sad for us. Uh, so we did have a retirement on September fourteenth. Pat Riley, physics teacher at Oliver Ames. Uh, Mr. Riley was with, has been with the Easton Public Schools for twenty-one years. Uh, he's a second career teacher. He began his career in Easton as, uh, the grade nine environmental science teacher at the Easton Junior High School and then physics teacher. He moved over to Oliver Ames High School in two thousand and eight to teach physics. As you know, physics is a very tough area. Um, it is very specific certification. Um, we are, um, currently posting that, but, um, it's the person that really makes us, um, sad. It's sad for us to see, uh, you know, these people that we know very well and, and do such a great job and have such wonderful experience going out the door. But, uh, we're very happy for him and his family and hope he has a very, um, long and healthy retirement. So we present you with that retirement.
All right, I will read his letter. Being in school yesterday, I realized that I was simply too anxious about the risk of virus, about the virus poses to me and my family to teach students face-to-face this year. I am very sorry about that. I'm a science guy and a people person, and during my time teaching in Easton, I felt like I was where I belong, doing what I should be doing. Unfortunately, I don't feel like I can do that wonderful work in the face of the real life or death risk posed by the virus. I had hoped for one more normal year, but that hope, along with many other people's hopes, was not to be. Thank you for your support and friendship through the years, Pat Riley. So I'll put my little blurb in here because we taught together at the Eastern Junior High School. It was always Mr. Riley, Mr. Pamela and Mrs. Donahue, and they were quite the team of physics teachers, uh, over when ninth grade was at the junior high school. And he always added, you know, a little laugh to faculty meetings and gatherings and just a, it, like he said, he's a people person. He is a people person, so, um, really sorry, really sorry to see him retiring.
And unfortunately, I did look at the attendees list and I don't see that he is here this evening, but I'm sure, um, yeah.
I'm sure somebody will tell them all the great things we said about him. All right, anybody else have any comments or go ahead?
He, um, he, uh, two of my kids were lucky enough to have Mr. Riley and he was just, you know, right from back to school night, you know, kind of showing you like the, the bed of nails and all the, the cool stuff that he would do in his classroom. He's super engaging and funny and, um, it just, uh, what I really appreciated about him was that, um, he just met the kids where they were. Like one of my kids was more comfortable sitting up at the front of the classroom with him. And he was like, all right, cool. So he sat up there and he used to talk hockey. And, um, and you know, you bump into him at a hockey game, an OA game a few years later, and he always asked about my oldest son. And so, you know, he really remembered the students and made a big impression on them. I used to hear stories about Mr. Riley said this and Mr. Riley told us that. So, uh, he just really made, made a good impression um, on all the students and was able to really connect with them, um, and, and bring the subject matter alive. Um, so he was just really, really awesome. We'll miss him.
Thanks Jen.
Speaking of little examples, um, he at one point took over, um, or agreed to teach forensics in addition to physics and said that, uh, he found the content to be a little dry, so he immediately went out and bought, um, a gallon of fake blood.
Yeah.
I believe that. I believe that. It's not surprising. All right, okay, go ahead Caroline.
A question. I have this vague recollection, I could be wrong, that he actually was a career change teacher, that he had come from another field altogether. I mean, another, he was a scientist effectively, I think.
Uh, I think he was in the construction industry. Yeah.
Oh, was that what it was? Okay, I, I just kind of remembered that he was, because I, I remember when he first came, I, I guess it was, you know, that new teacher orientation or whatever, that he, he seemed so excited to be, you know, entering this whole new world. Um, you know, a little bit later in life than would be typical for, for most teachers, but anyway. But he had just such unbridled enthusiasm.
The other funny story is that the ninth grade dinner dance was always such a, a big deal when it was at the, you know, when the ninth graders were at the junior high school. And his little daughter started, he would chaperone, but he would bring his little daughter. And I think she might have been five or six the first time she came. And she went every single year, like there's pictures of her every single year until she went to like her own prom, you know? So she's beautiful. He has two lovely, uh, children. So we wish him the best. All right, do I have a motion? Or do you want me to do it? I'll, I'll do it. I'm going to make a motion to accept with regret the retirement of Patrick Riley.
O'Neal, second with regret.
Thank you. All those in favor?
O'Neal, yes.
Durant, yes.
The Luca, yes.
Star, yes.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Next, discussion and vote to change conference dates on twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar. Dr. Cabral.
Thanks. So as you know, we had a bit of a shakeup of our schedule this year. And so, uh, now that we're looking at all the small details as we go through, uh, we're looking at marking periods and conference dates. Uh, Chrissy Pruitt, Assistant Superintendent, is going to describe to you our proposal for a change in the calendar. Um, not for school dates, but for, um, conferences.
Good evening, everyone. So we typically, i- in grades, in grades one through eight, K through eight, we typically divide, I'm sorry, one through eight, we divide the school year into three terms or three trimesters. Um, and because of that, our, we had to adjust timelines to the, to fit within the one hundred seventy days that children are in school this year. Um, because of that, we recognized that the dates that we typically do are, were a little off. So the dates that we are presenting tonight, um, will be parent conferences, will, for the beginning of the, for the fall will be, actually be Thursday and Friday, December tenth and eleventh. Um, and that will be K through eight. And our grades nine through twelve will stay the same as already in the calendar. So those, those are not affected throughout the year. We're just looking at the conference dates, K through eight. So the first conferences will be Thursday and Friday, December tenth and eleventh for grades K through eight. And then the second conferences, which are only K through five, will be Thursday and Friday, April first and second. For your approval, of course.
Any, uh, comments, questions? We're in a fluid year, so it could change again, I bet, but, um, yeah. Any, no other questions? Okay. Um, do I have a motion to vote on the conference date change in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendars?
So move.
Thank you. I need a second. Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
O'Neal, yes.
Durant, yes.
The Luca, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is a discussion and possible vote on, we have co-vice chairs right now. So it's, you know, we've had that since we reorganized a few meetings ago. Um, I have talked to our legal counsel, um, attorney Bryant. And she thought that there should just be one because of open meeting law violations. I talked to MASC, um, I forget his name, the man that's always in charge of everything. And he said code vice chair is a fine as long as each vice chair has a different responsibility. So one vice chair might be in charge of, uh, policies and meeting with the superintendent as necessary. And the other vice chair might be in charge of communication, wellness advisories, budget, something like that. So, um, it's up to the committee to decide right now, do you want to keep vice chairs, two vice chairs? Or do you want to keep two vice chairs and give them specific responsibilities or to go to one vice chair? Caroline?
Oh, um, I think that it's fine to keep two vice chairs. You did, you did mention that it's really just a potential open meeting law violation and that would only be under very specific circumstances such as the superintendent communicating with three people as opposed to one or two, which wouldn't be a quorum. And I, I mean, I certainly trust our superintendent to avoid doing that if we were to have two vice chairs. And, um, I've looked into this, uh, a little bit and it does seem that other, there are other committees that have two vice chairs, but they um, have kind of assigned, um, sort of a focus for each of them. Um, and I think that that's something we could, could work out together. Um, I'm not sure that we need, I mean, we wouldn't need a vote if we keep the two vice chairs, but either way, I do think that it, it does make sense maybe for us to, to, to kind of make some, um, you know, specific guidelines in terms of who would do what or who would be responsible for what, but, um, you know, we always talk about not having enough support personnel. School committee needs more support personnel too, so. Uh, anyway, what does everybody else think?
Um, I, I would be comfortable with two if, if both, um, if both of the, the, if our two current co-vice chairs um, thought that's a workable solution. And I, I agree with Caroline. I think, um, you know, it, it wouldn't be difficult to, to define kind of areas of focus for each one that would, you know, one, support the committee, right, and, and help us, you know, with, with our needs. But two, then also I think, I hope meet the goals of, of both Michelle and Jackie. Um, in terms of, you know, and I had mentioned when we had first voted on this, um, you know, I was, I was really torn because I think there is tremendous value in, 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 in either or both. Um, and, and I really, again, I feel strongly that, you know, in order to set up, um, you know, future success for if Michelle were to become the chair at some point, that there are certain um, experiences and functions that would be beneficial for her to have, uh, before stepping into that role when Nancy's term expires. Again, assuming that the tradition of kind of how that's worked out continues. Uh, but at the same time, given the environment that we're in, um, you know, Jackie is, is obviously doing, um, a lot of work, really valuable work. Um, is, is an excellent writer. I think fills a really important role um, with communication and has been helping with writing, um, some of our policy. And, and I wouldn't want to, um, to, you know, to take away from uh, her role at all in, in, you know, all the valuable work that she does, you know, for us and with us. So that's kind of where I'm thinking, but I'm curious to see, of course, what Michelle thinks and, and I, I would like to, you know, I know Jackie's not able to be here tonight, but what her thoughts would be on, um, a structure like that.
I spoke, I spoke with, I spoke with, thanks Jen. I spoke with Jackie today and, um, she's fine. In fact, you know, she's fine with the coach here thing. She feel, and I feel the same way. Like the five of us seem to work pretty well together. Um, she's noticed, uh, several other school committees here and there that, uh, there's been a lot of stuff going on. So anyway, um, she's fine with that and fine with, you know, giving her a set of things and Michelle a set of, of things of responsibility. So Michelle, you want to weigh in on anything here?
I have no problem just, you know, dividing up what we do. I'm not really sure what we do do though.
Well, there's a lot. There are actually, you, it's, there's a lot, really. So, um, what we'd have to do maybe later on, uh, not during this meeting now, but we'll ma- I'll make a list of the different responsibilities and then, you know, we can either, you know, Michelle and Jackie can figure out which ones they would be interested in doing, okay? Does that sound right, everybody? Okay, so we don't need, we don't need to vote. We're going to keep our co-vice chairs and, uh, continue along as the good working group that we are. Okay. Um, reopening update, Dr. Cabral.
Thanks. So we are in full swing now. We are at our, um, cohort capacity. Uh, of course, the middle school and high school started today. We have now gone through A, cohort A and cohort B, pre-K to five. And we have now had students in, and also for the other cohort, for, for the middle and high school, but not in person. So we are, uh, tomorrow finishing up with cohort B. Of course, on Monday cohort A will come in and then by Tuesday, we can say that everyone throughout the district has worked with both cohorts in person. So we're getting there. So far, uh, I certainly can, um, report an overwhelming, uh, number of positive comments and feedback. However, there are naturally bumps and hiccups along the way, which we certainly anticipated. There, I did have gotten feedback that there was, um, expectation of potentially more bumps and hiccups. And fortunately, some things that people were a little concerned with, um, went seamlessly and other things that sort of weren't on their radar showed up. And so they're working tonight, working late into the night to try to make those adjustments in time for tomorrow. And then obviously, um, making adjustments for cohort B when they come on Thursday. So it was very, uh, good today. You know, we spoke with the, um, the cabinet, all of the administrators in the district and they had a great attitude about it. They said that they, um, are already making modifications for cohort Bs coming in on Thursday and, um.
Okay, excuse me, sorry. Today's Thursday.
I mean cohort A, excuse me.
Okay. I'm like, today?
Cohort A coming in on Monday, excuse me.
K through twelve came in today, right? Cohort B, okay, go ahead.
Monday, sorry. Cohort A on Monday.
Okay.
So they are, uh, they're already making recommendations of things that they're going to change. They're already looking ahead to cohort A and nothing came up that they said. I didn't hear anything, um, that was insurmountable for Monday or even for tomorrow. So they're working on it and, um, as I think Corinne said earlier, the kids were very excited to be back. Um, so we are, um, Chrissy and I are going to be at the middle school and the high school tomorrow. We're looking forward to seeing the kids and the staff. And, uh, yeah, it was, we're getting there. So we also, of course, uh, or, or Chrissy and I are having daily, we have a daily standing meeting with the Board of Health. We are getting some more things fine tuned, which I'm feeling very good about. We have come up with a reporting and communication system with all of our schools. So we have sort of a watch list. Anyone that we hear about, we are investigating in terms of, you know, rumors about being symptomatic or visits to the nurse's office where somebody may present symptoms or uh, I can say we have not had, I, I don't even want to say it out loud. We're doing.
No, don't say it.
We're doing well. We're doing very well and we hope that that continues. Uh, I, I will add that I am I may be personally frustrated, so this could be borderline professional personal comment, but I'm a little bit frustrated that I, I completely understand, like, believe me, I completely understand the sense of frustration people have in the Commonwealth with restrictions that are still in place and our need to get our economy back on track. But from this singular perspective, I very much would have appreciated a little more time for the schools to sort of get entrenched in what we're doing and get in a routine and have everything fine tuned before they opened up some more things. And, uh, of course, the governor has opened and made some more, um, allowances for, um, social interactions, um, starting Monday in terms of bars and restaurants and, you know, larger seatings of guests and things like that. I'm hoping it does not have an impact on what we're doing in the schools. I feel very strongly. And now the more and more, and I certainly don't just. And now the more and more, and I certainly don't disparage any of our colleagues around the state. We all have different resources and partnerships and items and, and people at our disposal. But I am feeling better and better about our plan every day. And certainly in comparison to some other places that are struggling right now. We are extremely fortunate, first and foremost, to have the partnerships that we have established here in Easton. We have benefited greatly from our collaborations with the town offices. Certainly the, the DPW, certainly the Town Administration, the Board of Health, the YMCA, Maplewood. We have just really had tremendous input and participation. And we are exceedingly fortunate for that. In addition, as, as you know, we had an extremely collaborative process, which was, it felt unwieldy at times and it was a lot to put together and synthesize. But I feel like it was entirely worth it because what we're finding is that a lot of our district friends are having some difficulty now rolling things out because now they've got the perspectives of these other people. And they're seeing that some things that sounded like they were going to work great, maybe not so much. We benefited very much from an extremely large workforce of volunteers this summer. And so again, I just have to express our thanks to all of those professionals within our district that helped us throughout the summer. Because it, it, we are seeing now that it, the preparation is really paying off. Again, nothing is foolproof. And certainly we will try to get better every single day. But we are refining some things right now. So for example, in our standing meeting every day with the Board of Health, we go through this process of sharing our information, sharing information from the school nurses to the Board of Health, Board of Health back. We have a very straightforward line of communication with them. We literally are on texts from five in the morning to 10 o'clock at night. And we, and I wouldn't be surprised if that is three o'clock in the morning some days, just when things pop up. And we have had a lot of luck so far with the systems we have in place. So we feel good about that. We're also now, I'm going back to this, the plan and I'm trying to make sort of cheat sheets for some of the more complex information, both for staff and for families. So for example, you know, it, it, none of this is information that's not already out. However, similar to the playbook, I'm trying to create some visuals, some flow charts, some, you know, two column charts, things that as things come up for people, they can just say, well, wait a second, I, you know, my, my child is sick today. Who do I call? What do I do? And they can just go to this flow chart and see what happens. Not only what they do and who they contact, but then they can see what happens at the district level after that. We feel as though that level of transparency is really important. We want peo- parents to know, okay, you might report something to this person, but then where does the district take it from there? And we want them to feel confident in, in how far we take everything. So that entire flow chart, of course, it's in the plan, but as a flow chart, I think it's a little more visually understandable. People can look at it and, and, and get the core concepts in a shorter amount of time. So I will be going back and adding things like that to the playbook, adding things like that to the, the, the district plan. And we're also trying to do that for staff. So for example, I'm, I'm ill. Does that count for sick time? Does that count for federal FF-CRA coverage? Is that unpaid? What do I, you know, who do I contact? So we are putting that together for staff as well. And, and when we sent, when I sent out the playbook to families, I did send it to staff, but I also sent a staff guy, guidance, some staff, a, a staff guidance deck of slides also. And so we'll be adding to that as we go along. So we're encouraging staff and families to continually look at those documents. Again, they're also on our district website, right up at the top. So if, if someone goes to our district website, in the center of the page, we have reopening information. If they click on that, the, the slide deck for the, the playbook is, is the first thing and it is going to be the first thing throughout the process. As new communications come out, we're going to keep that at the top. Just so that if somebody really can't figure out to, really can't figure out where to find something that they know they've seen before, they can always go to the playbook on the top of the website. So we're looking at things like that and I would ask that if anybody has anything to suggest that might make for a good flow chart or a, a one pager summary that they let us know. Because we do want to, you know, it's, it's wonderful to have a lot of information out, but if people are unable to access it quickly when they need it or they have trouble understanding it, then it's not useful to anyone. So we're spending the time now and trying to provide those resources for people. So when things come out, I don't want people to think this is additional information. We will, of course, be updating things all along as we come up with better ways to do things. But I do want to make sure that people realize a lot of the information they're getting is just going to be the same information. We're just trying to capsule it, you know, give, give everybody things in capsule versions. So if they think something is unclear, if they want to let us know, we will work our best to make sure that we are able to get that out to everyone. And I think that's about it. We have a lot of exhausted staff today. TGI Thursday, because we just, we, we got to get through one more day. And then they will have a well deserved weekend. It is physically exhausting as, in addition to mentally challenging to have this level of interaction all day long in two different modalities. And so just want to really send out our thanks because planning is one thing, but implementing is certainly something else entirely. And we have, you know, just about 600 staff members working. I always think of an orchestra, right? That's working in perfect concert with one another, all doing their part and contribution to the greater good. And we are so blessed to be here with them and to serve them and support them. And I just want to really, as many times as I can, give a shout out to them for their continued work. And, you know, hang with us while we get better supports and get better systems in place. Please feel free to thank a teacher, thank a principal, reach out to a para or someone that's communicating with your student that you feel could use a, a pick me up. Because believe me, there are, there aren't too many. You can, you can absolutely spend two minutes writing one sentence and I, I'm telling you it will, it will keep them going for another week. So thank you to, to all of them. Do you have any questions for me?
Go ahead Caroline.
How do you feel that some of the, that how the safety protocols are going? I mean, I know it's just the first day at EMS and OA. So my guess would be that things are not perfect yet. But is there someone sort of checking to make sure that, you know, the mask wearing is consistent? And, you know, that all of the, oh, by the way, how exciting that we got those air purifiers. I mean, I just was jumping up and down when we got the email about that. But, you know, there's just so many things that have been put in place. But of course, it sometimes takes people to ensure that those things remain in place as planned. So I'm just wondering, you know, in general, what kind of approach is being taken to make sure that students, for example? I mean, I, I heard a couple of comments about a lot of the boys wearing the masks under their noses, things like that, which is, you know, is problematic if that's true. So I'm just wondering how, you know, how those protocols are sort of being checked on and consistently enforced.
I will tell you that we've been through many classrooms, almost every classroom in the district. And I didn't see one mask with the nose down. Now, I'm not suggesting that isn't the case. I certainly would never say that. Statistically, that's going to be the case at some point. I was very surprised at how there was no fidgeting, there was no playing. It was not under the chin, under the nose. They were actively participating in class without that. And there are going to be exceptions. However, every student is supervised at all times. So they're in a class with no more than 16, 17 people at one time. So there's a very high level of supervision and staff members, whether they're teachers or whether they are other professionals in the hallway when students are navigating around the building. They can always see that and address it basically instantaneously. So I have found that it has actually been going much better than I personally anticipated.
That's great. I'm really glad to hear it. Oh, just this another little completely off top, well, not completely off topic, but just a new idea. I was thinking about how hard it is sometimes to, to talk through a mask for the teacher. I would think for the teachers that would be the case because I've certainly found that to be the case if I do have to interact with somebody when I have a mask on. You know, those little miniature microphones we have that we, when we do the musicals and things like that? I mean, I know we don't have, you know, an extra bucket of money laying around, but I'm just wondering if something like that would maybe help teachers who, who may have difficulty projecting with masks on? I mean, I would think that would be a challenge. I know this is not what we're talking about specifically, but that did occur to me that it could make it easier for teachers addressing their classes.
Yeah, we did, again, benefiting from the input of the faculty that participated this summer. That was brought up very early on in the summer. And so we actually did use federal grant money to get tons of microphones.
Oh, good.
Those people that want them have been able to ask their principal for them. That's when we ordered the webcams and the
Okay, I knew about the webcams. I just, I don't know if I forgot or just wasn't aware about the
No, I didn't think of
Wonderful.
It certainly was input that we received and we're happy to take. And so not everybody uses them. Everybody has not found, you know, everybody's different. Their classroom setups are different. The devices they are using are different. Some prefer to use their own device. Some prefer to use the desktop. Some prefer to use a Chromebook. It's, it's very, it's very individual. So we do have them available though, if somebody wants them. Some people have used them and then found they actually preferred it better without them. So they gave it back.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, great, thank you. Okay, public comment, Mrs. Pruitt.
Good evening. We have some comments in the chat today, tonight. The first is from Beth Gaylor, Nine Day Street. I realized today was the first day in person at OA and there are still kinks to be worked out. But there doesn't seem to be any consistency at the high school when it comes to mask breaks. Some classes didn't have them at all, while at least one class's mask break consisted of the teacher telling the students that they could all just remove their masks for five minutes. They remained seated at their desks, indoors obviously, and no additional effort was made to separate them. What is the correct procedure for the high school? Doesn't it defeat the purpose of having the kids wear masks if we're going to let them remove them for several minutes with no additional precautions? I understand that it would be difficult and time consuming to take a group of high schoolers to another place for a mask break. But then I question why we are having these designated breaks at all? Do high school students really need designated mask breaks all at the same time in the same place?
Okay, great. I think there are several questions there, but I think they're all very similar in nature. So I'm going to try to make sure I answer all of them. Please let me know if I leave something out. Yes, the high schools are going to be very different than literally the rest of the district. Not just because of the schedule, but also just because of the, the development of the student who is at the high school as opposed to being the middle school or one of the elementary schools. So, you know, of course, when they're in the elementary schools, they're with the same teacher all day long. The teacher knows when they have breaks. They work them into what they're doing. High school's very different because the students are much more capable of advocating for themselves. For example, for the need for a mask break. So, all right, let me make sure I answer the question. So first of all, they always have the hallway where a student can step out at any time if they need a mask break, if that's appropriate. And that can be done as the, as the questioner, I'm sorry, I forgot the, I'm sorry, sorry, I forgot your name. But as the, the person who asked the question noted, one student can walk out in the hallway or three students can walk out the hallway and have very appropriate social distancing at one time if they need a break. And they would communicate that to their teacher. As far as scheduling them, that's going to be different than the elementary school because if a student is, you know, six different periods in a day, they certainly can't have six scheduled breaks for every class. The teacher's not going to know if they've had five other mask breaks already. So it really is up to the student to advocate for themselves. What we're doing is having the teachers use their professional judgment. I, for example, would know if I were teaching a class of teenagers, I, you can tell. There's a certain place where people are sort of, maybe they're starting to fidget or they're glazing over a little bit, or they just need a stretch break. And so then it would be entirely appropriate for a teacher to make that executive decision to have everybody stand up, maybe have half the class go in the hallway, half the class around the room. In terms of having a mask break in the room, again, that's really going to depend. I, I don't know how many students were in the room. It could have been a very small cohort in that class. Maybe there were six students there and they had even more than six foot distancing. I, I really don't know. It, it's, it's hard to, 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 it's hard for me to give a firm answer on that because I, I don't know the specific circumstance. But, and there could be many, many different iterations of that. So I think I answered all the questions. But basically, we're asking students to advocate for themselves if they feel the need that they need a break at any particular time. And the teacher is going to use their professional judgment of when the students might need a break. Yes, it is conceivable that no teacher offers a mask break in the entire day because maybe they don't perceive that that's necessary for their students. Things are going well in the class and no student maybe asks for a mask break to advocate for themselves. So they certainly don't need necessarily a scheduled mask break, which I think was one of the questions as well. It's going to be based on student need and the professional judgment as well.
Okay, the next question is from Allison Daly, 32 Deborah Lee Lane. Question coming from a parent of a second grader and kindergartner. Am I correct that in order for children to be permitted to attend school four days in person in the next phase, we will need to reevaluate EPS's recommendation of student desks being six feet apart? Will four days be feasible if EPS and the community agree on three feet of distance as recommended by Desi? How are we evaluating the efficacy of remote learning in these young learners?
So I would say the biggest differences right now between stage three and four is that instead of four and a half days, students would come for a full day. Instead of six foot social distancing, it would be three foot social distancing. And lunch is going to be served PK to 12. So yes, it is correct. We would not move from stage three until stage, from three to four, unless we were able to have the three foot social distancing because we wouldn't be able to fit all of the students. If all the students were coming four days a week, we would not be able to fit them with the six foot social distancing. Now with that said, again, as we continue, we learn more. We, we sort of created phases before we really even understood what was going to happen here. It is possible that, you know, several weeks down the line, we find that it doesn't make sense for us to go from three to four. Maybe we talk to our staff about a 3B or something. Maybe the staff wants to try something. And again, I'm completely making this up because we don't have any of these situations yet. But suppose they said, you know, well, let's talk about maybe extending the school day. Again, when I'm talking about iterations, there are many iterations between phases three and four as we're learning. So perhaps we just keep it in the cohorts, keep the six foot distancing, for example, and have students go for the full day instead of four and a half hours. That's an iteration that we, we hadn't considered that, that we could talk about. We will not make those decisions though, without consulting the greater body and making sure that it's possible and making sure that it's safe. In fact, I have no recommendation to the schools committee to change anything unless conditions make it as safe as possible. I, I can confidently welcome students into the school right now. I can confidently have staff in the buildings. We're not going to try to test something without being sure that we have um without being sure that we have perfected the systems we currently have in place. I'm completely looking at this as taking baby steps with safety the number one concern. And um I feel like right now we have control over the safety and the protocols and the cleaning and so forth in all of the buildings. So before we even added anything, before we even consulted with staff, with experts, with the board of health to see if we could make a change, we would have to feel very comfortable that everything we have in place right now is working perfectly. After one week, I can't say that. We are still adjusting, as I said. Middle school and high school literally just went into the building today. It's the very first day. So I would not expect any conversation even about this for weeks. Certainly, that is um said if all indicators remain the same or got better. If they change toward uh the negative in any way, that is a much different conversation, and this could go a lot longer. Conceivably, if things got worse in Easton, we could either remo- move to a full remote model if if unfortunately things become unwieldy as they were in March. Or we could conceivably be in phase three as we know it today until June. Um we will not consider any changes again until what we're currently doing is working perfectly. And um what's happening in our community stays at a level um that it is at right now, which is um i- an excellent level in the Commonwealth. I hope that answers the question. We haven't sort of given like if A and B happen, then we're gonna switch because there's just so many variables to consider, um and we don't wanna leave any out. So those are among the things that we would discuss, but certainly we can't go to phase four unless we're going to three foot social distancing. So if you're talking strictly about going to three to four, um yes, that's absolutely correct. We can't do that unless we all determine, and by all, I mean medical experts, town of Easton, school committee, um we all think that that three feet is safe. And right now I do not um advocate for that.
The next comment is from Lauren Loomis on Four Abbey Road. The teachers and staff have done the impossible. Thank you. Our next comment is again from Allison Daly, thirty-two Deborah Lee Lane. Do you anticipate the entire EPS community moving through phases together, or is there any thought to K to being treated differently due to learning styles and needs?
Yes, that's absolutely possible. We will look at every single configuration. It's entirely possible that different grade bands could move to different iterations uh than than other grade bands. And again, that would be based on the size of the cohorts, the number of students in the building, the developmental ages and needs of students. Um but all, of course, with the same level of safety in mind.
The next question is height from height, sorry, from Wendy Mann, twenty-nine Rockland Street. Hi, I appreciate your response to the last question. However, can a block be established when the kids can access their water, their water bottle in high school? For example, D Block, kids are not going to want to get up and leave and miss some class time when there is not much class time to begin with.
Uh yes, in fact, um like I said, the high school today was just the first day. All of the feedback that we are receiving, the high school is receiving, uh you know, a million times over from their own staff, from students. So they will take all of this into consideration, and after a week or so, I am very confident. Once they get through both cohorts, I am extremely confident that we're gonna see some tweaks, um some improvements. Uh I don't know what they're going to be because I I leave it to them to present to us, and I certainly will support everything that makes sense. Um so I I anticipate that you will see um improvements all along the way at every level, and perhaps that's one of them. But uh we definitely need to see both cohorts come in. We need teachers and students to experience what's happening. And then uh they will make recommendations and we will certainly push out that information to everyone.
That's all we have.
Great. And this feedback is fantastic. I encourage you to reach out to the schools and share that feedback with them because, again, that's what they're taking in right now. They're taking all of that information in and um excuse me, thinking about the day, day, day operations and how they can improve upon that. And so uh we we definitely appreciate feedback and suggestions, so thank you for that.
Okay, great. Any other uh questions or anything for Dr. Cabral? Okay. Uh next superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral.
I think I basically my entire life is the reopening, so I feel like I covered it in the reopening at this point.
Okay, thanks. Uh assistant superintendent notes, Chrissy.
For mine is also, uh my life is also about the reopening, so a lot of what I wanted to say, I checked off as Leisha said it. Um so I just, I but I do want to just remind everyone that we are at the very beginning of these stages. Um for example, a teacher may have given, provided a an activity for your child um that they thought may have, may take five minutes and it actually took twenty-five minutes. Or may, the teacher may have thought that the activity would take twenty minutes and it may have in fact taken five minutes. So the teachers are getting used to this as well. Um so you know, I know that there are a lot of people have been extremely patient so far, and I really appreciate that. We are not, we don't think we're perfect right now at all, and there's going to be bumps in the road, and I think it's really important to have your constant feedback to us. Um please contact the your teach, the teachers and principals when you have questions or concerns. Um and also when you find, when you see something that you like. You know, as you can imagine, um you know, our inboxes are constantly full with complaints. Um and that's fine. I'm not complaining about that, but sometimes those of um our our staff that are that once in a while, it's nice to hear the good things that are happening um for your children. So I just encourage you to to take that into into consideration. And our teachers, you know, as as educators, it's in their nature to be consistent learners. Um they are asking for tools constantly um from my office. So we are in the process, thank goodness, for the CARES funding because we are able to provide that those tools um such as um there's a great, a great tool that we're purchasing called Kami, which are, which will allow students to to interact with PDFs um as well as Perdeck, which makes um slideshows interactive for our students individually interactive, which is really neat. Um and and they're asking for this. You know, the teachers are finding these tools and asking for us to purchase them. So um you know, I it's just gonna be, you know, it as as the days and weeks go on, everything is just going to get better and better and better. Um and and as well as professional development, the teachers are already reaching out to me asking if they can have more professional development um on specific things, and we are providing that for them. So there, this is a huge learning curve for everyone, um including our children. Our children are a little bit more tech savvy. You know, they already know how to collaborate on um remotely. Um as many of them have already, and you know, they've already done duo- duos or duets and in uh TikTok and all that stuff. I'm learning my language on that uh with my own children, but you know, I just, I thank you for your patience. There's been a lot of, a lot of patience and a lot of understanding from our community. Um and and I ask for your forgiveness, um because there will be mistakes made, and that's, and that's okay. So um you know.
I just wanna add that um a couple of things. I have a couple of PSAs here, so I apologize if you'll indulge me. Um Chrissy reminded me of a few things. Um so first of all, a lot of the things that p- parents are seeing happening now happen all the time in classrooms. They just don't see it because they're not there. So for example, after teaching for twenty years, whenever you create a new project, it's always an estimation of what you think your learners are going to know, um how long it's gonna take, if they're going to enjoy it. And so we make adjustments on the fly all the time. I always tell the staff we are professional punters. And I can't tell you how many times, after my nineteenth year, I would try something new or frankly, try something that was like my go-to assignment, but you've got a different bunch of kids in front of you. And they all respond differently to different things. And what I thought would take the period took fifteen minutes. And then I punt and I do something else. Or the opposite, I've got my lesson plans out for the next two weeks because I think we're gonna get through this very quickly in the first couple of days, and I'm finding they're really struggling with this. I've gotta get back and make sure they get to the core understanding. So this happens all the time. It's very normal, and believe me, the teachers know how to make up for this. The difference now, of course, is that some of this is done um when the students are working on their own. So they just have to wait, the to the students report to the teacher how long it took them to do something, and then they make the adjustments. So none of this is really atypical in our experience. It's just that there's a different lens in the classroom at this point. I will also add my PSA on that. We have had now not just a few, we've actually had more than a few at this point. Um and I'm gonna ask people to refrain from this, and I hope it's obvious why, but we have had, we have students that um you know, have logins to the class because on their cohort days where they're at home, they're remoting in. We've had quite a number of reports of um students who are on their in-person days in the class. And their parents are logging in from home to watch the class. Um we're gonna ask that parents do not do that. Um that is not the purpose of that. Uh you can imagine it is very disconcerting for the teacher. It actually makes things run a little bit slower. It actually is distracting for the students. Um it's just wrong. Um and and we're just gonna ask people to refrain from that if they can, and we'll we'll send something home to to kind of remind people not to do that. In any moment, if there are questions of a staff member, just please reach out to them directly. They will get right back to you. If you have a question, you wanna know something's working, just let them know, and they will absolutely get back to you. Um they're very responsive, but that is something that we just can't we just can't have that continue. That's not how we're operating right now. Um the second thing is we are um just in a normal school year, whatever that is gonna be again. Uh just in a normal school year, we really try to limit the number of people that are on our facilities during the day. Uh one for for security reasons. But uh now more than ever, we are, you've heard from the presentations tonight, we're outside a lot more. And when a phys ed teacher tries to take students out to the track, for example, or to a playing field, and there are residents on there either um with dogs or walking the track or so forth, it's really compromising to what they're trying to get accomplished. So it is inconvenient, I'm sure, but we're gonna ask people if they can please stay off of the facilities just during school hours. Obviously, it's a community space. We welcome, we love having the community make use of the facilities. But we're really trying to have mask breaks, lunches, um classes outside as much as possible, and it does really restrict what the teachers are able to do if they try to use an open space and there are um residents using it. So we're we're asking for that um at this time. It would be a big help to us um to have your cooperation on that. And then finally, um I think, is that it? I'm sorry. Oh, I guess this is, I'm I'm gonna take this as a good sign. We're having a lot of requests of parents who want their students now who are working remotely to come in person. And I certainly can appreciate that. I'm I'm encouraged by that, frankly. I I I'm gonna just whether it's intended or not, we're gonna take it as a sign that people are confident and comfortable with what we're doing in person. Uh however, we are gonna ask that we um, you know, that that people understand we just can't do that right now. We are really are at our six foot capacity, and until circumstances change that we feel more comfortable bringing more students in, we have scheduled all the classes. And the frankly, the the amount of staff we have based on what parents reported their desires to be at the start of the school year. So we really need to get much more adept and really build our capacity at what we're doing right now before we're gonna be able to to add um other people. So I am very encouraged by that. I'm glad that people are asking for that. We will do our best to move along on our timeline, uh but it certainly won't be it won't be for weeks because we just aren't at a point where we're one hundred percent confident that every single system is gonna work perfectly. And as we said, we're kind of teasing things out, and um we just wanna make sure that before we move to something else, it's perfectly safe, not only for the students coming in, but for those that are there now. Uh we don't wanna compromise distancing and things like that. So uh whenever, as everybody becomes more comfortable, we'll be able to have those conversations. And this is an indulgent moment I'm gonna have right here. If I looked a little distracted, I apologize, but as you know, because I've mentioned it before, my family lives in Florida, and uh I actually got a text saying my god, I thought you'd never stop talking. So I apologize for anybody who is um looking to wrap this up this evening, that I may have talked too long. Uh you know, a face that even a mother can love. This is um a dial, a a a a monologue that even a mother can love, and and she's not so much loving it this evening. So I'm gonna take that as a sign that I I'm going over my airtime, and I apologize. Hopefully you found some of the useful information. Please call me if you need any other information. I'm getting the hook.
I I, you know, I'm gonna take up some more airtime, so to your parents. No, I just, I just, we we share so much about what our um educators are doing. I just, I I always forget to leave out. I I always forget to mention our principals and all the work that they have put in to make this successful and smooth. Um in fact, you know, I I I've spoken to many of them or and they are constantly, they're so hard on themselves, saying, well, this pickup didn't go as smoothly as I wanted, or you know, the the teachers need this, and you know, and they're so reflective, and they are they are making this happen, and I'm just so thankful for what they are doing and how committed they are. Um and it for all of those of you out there listening, um they are so responsive, so please reach out to them. Um because they are, you know, they they get back to people very quickly, if not, you know, immediately. So um so I just encourage that uh as well because they they are right there, ready to to assist in any way. And so, you know, just kudos to our to our principals and assistant principals as well. Um thank you, and our specialty coordinators as well. Thanks.
And I just wanna point out that I did mention them earlier. You did not, but I did.
Okay.
They're rock stars, and we're really, we're really thankful.
Okay, thank you. All right, school committee notes, Caroline.
Okay, well, first of all, I do consider it my job to give you a run for your money, Leisha, when it comes to talking. I I I think you are in first place, though. Um so I'm gonna have to step up my game here. Now, I wondered, could we possibly have some kind of sign uh for the fields, the turf rather specifically? I mean, I, it honestly didn't occur to me, but of course, that would be a huge problem if the if someone wants to take a class outside and suddenly they see in various parts of the field or the turf that there are you know, other individuals that that um kind of defeats the purpose of our focusing on being outside as much as possible. Could we put up some signs or something to please, you know, not come during those hours to the public? Is that even possible?
Sure, we can, uh.
Yeah, he's actually ordered them.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I I I'm not sure if Bill Matthews or the Board of Health ordered signs already, but.
Uh David Twombly told me this afternoon that that Bill ordered them.
Yeah.
And and just one other comment. You know, you'd think that I would realize this could happen, but I was actually sort of stunned to hear you say that parents were logging in while their kids were in person to look at the class. I mean, obviously, we would never have we would never expect parents to just be able to wander into classrooms while they're going on. I mean, think of how incredibly disruptive that would be during normal times. So it's it's honestly a little disappointing to hear that parents are doing that, and I'm just gonna say it, sounds like the ultimate helicopter or snowplow parenting. And I don't think that's a good thing for our kids. I mean, we need to to, you know, be able to send our kids off. I mean, at this point, it's only two short days a week. Um you know, but they can come home and report. But I I really do hope that people respect your request and understand that um it could be very disruptive. And and honestly, I think a little nerve-wracking for a teacher to think that there could be all sorts of you know, people watching and perhaps you know, commenting or whatever. So so I I'm glad that you brought that up. I was just disappointed to hear that that was happening.
And the, and there are children in the classroom as well that I
Right.
probably don't want who, those parents probably don't want other people watching their children.
Yeah, no, I agree.
You're done, Caroline? You're done, Caroline?
That's it, okay. Michelle, Michelle.
Oh goodness, I have a question though about the parents logging in. Is there a way though for teachers to, like, if it was Zoom, you could remove them from the meeting? Can you do that in Google?
Yes, they can. They have to see them first, of course. But they can do that, yeah.
But it would show up as a person or a name or something that they didn't recognize. I mean, I have concerns with that for privacy issues.
We agree. Michelle, to be honest with you, I think similar to Caroline. I do not think any teacher anticipated that that would happen. And so they weren't actually looking for that. But now, of course, that they realize the possibility, yes, absolutely. Now they look for that and they can exit someone from the meeting, but. I don't think, I haven't come across anybody that actually anticipated that that was going to happen. So again. We go on, we learn more every single day and we could just get a little bit of, a little bit better at things.
Is that something that we would need to have a policy on? I mean, I'm, that really bothers me. You don't know what's getting recorded or not recorded.
Right. So we have an acceptable use policy and we want to add it to that. Again, one of those things we just didn't anticipate. So as we. Learn about all the nuances and things, we will keep adjusting. So yes, people will see things like policies change and protocols and maybe even schedules. Because these are the things that crop up that we just try to perfect the system. So yes, that was, that's going to be added to the policy that we've sent about not recording and things like that.
Okay, thanks. That's all. I just had that question.
Thank you, Jen.
Uh, sure, keep it quick. I first of all, want to thank the OA administrators who were involved with getting the SATs. Done yesterday. I know that was an enormous, enormous relief to to our seniors who had, in many cases. Four or five test dates that they'd signed up for canceled. So just thank you to to everybody who worked on making that happen. I know parents and students were really relieved and grateful for that. So great job there. And then I guess, yes, I'm the only, only one on tonight that has kids in schools. So I'll just give my report that really. Really smooth start. So my two are at OA, so it was full remote for the first five days. But was really, really well done. You know, I don't see much because I'm not, you know, there next to him, my my own work to do during the day, but. You know, from what I could see, kids were engaged. They were actually doing work. They weren't. You know, in my kitchen every five minutes. So whatever the teachers were doing, it was great. It kept them on all day. And then, you know, it was really wonderful today to be able to bring them to school and pick them up and. See all their, all the other kids there. I was impressed by. At pickup time, the number of all the kids came out still wearing their masks. Many of them kept them on through the parking lot and getting into their cars. And was really impressed as well with how smooth drop off and pickup was. So I expected to have. You know, this nightmare of, you know, because it's usually pretty challenging there and it was actually one of the smoothest drop offs and pickups that I've done. So. Having only half the students there certainly made a big difference there, even with the buses having reduced capacity. So. All in all, you know, we're, it's better than I could have expected, starting off. So great job, everybody.
Good. We'll relay that. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay. So our next meeting will be Thursday, October eighth. And I'm going to make that meeting for six o'clock because. Ahead of that meeting, we're going to have the professional status reception and I. It'll either be Zoom or Google. We'll have to figure out how to get that on there for five o'clock. So we'll still do the same thing, but it will just be virtual. So I'll talk to Lynn and Leisha and everybody about getting that together. And also just a reminder, everybody. I know we're Easton. Yom Kippur is Monday, so follow your religious day guidelines. Okay.
So Nancy.
Yes, Caroline.
Sorry, I just, I was a little confused because I didn't see it on the calendar, but I thought we might be meeting next week because of a potential vote on. Okay, so that'll just be, that'll be added.
Our next official meeting is Thursday, October eighth. But as you know, it could change. We might have to pivot and it would change, so.
I know, it's just that we we have to be sure that we have that forty-eight hour, you know.
Oh, I know.
For the posting. Okay, thank you.
Definitely, we're doing October eighth and doing the professional status reception. I believe there's six teachers that are involved in that.
No, that'll be nice. Yeah.
Okay, I know. That'll be like a pleasant thing in the middle of everything. All right, and I just, you know, thank you to staff, administration, principals. Custodians, nurses, everybody. No, parents, families, and thank you, students for just. Being so happy to be back and following the rules. So I think that's really good. Does anyone else have any final comments? I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
O'Neill, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neill, yes.
Yes.
Luca, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Keep in touch.
Bye.
Bye.